Can I make the public comments?
You don't really talk.
Are you right now?
I'm allowed.
Yes.
We're calling the meeting, or any public comment? There are none. Committee reports. Mr. Brenner, you want to start?
Not much. Animal shelter, I haven't been out there for a while, so I haven't heard of any bad things. I've seen this running alright. John keeps asking when the next meeting is, they must have something you don't bring up, so I said, well, I'll probably cancel it anyway. Health department on the replacing the heating and cooling system, probably be a couple of papers. We were waiting till Prairie Press, when they put it in their papers after September the first, we'll be able to put it in paper and ask for bids, so. I know the Senator Mitsubishi called me last week, didn't know how we're doing, updating on that, so I said, I'll lay them all once in the papers. So I think it'll be in the paper after September 1st. I think they have fifteen days or thirty days to pick up the bids and submit the bids. Hopefully we'll start before winter, so. Let's move the pace along, but making progress. Other than that, nothing. I got this mail back, or email back from Creed Roofing. They've got our contract to be sent to them. The work is to start, anticipating work to start around September 28th. Weather permitting, he'll be making pre-construction site visit within the next couple of weeks, so. I got a letter, or email out to him, and he'll get with me, we'll go along and do a construction site pre- construction site visit, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, and then kind of plan on that thing starting somewhere around the 28th of September. So, it's kind of squeezing it in. Pretty close to October, November, so I wouldn't be having any problem anywhere else, so we'll see. Hopefully it gets out and down before winter. That's probably the biggest thing on there. So I can have a little more backup here on my end from our meeting out in Denver.
Right.
I didn't feel very good when I got back. I don't know whether it's, you're up that high or something.
Well, I imagine, yeah.
When I got back at about one o'clock, and we were open that night, so I hit the, didn't get much rest in between, about killed in a week it did, so. And they said they didn't feel very good.
Mike must be recovering too.
Probably.
How many people were at the reception?
There were, there were probably, there were probably about two dozen or more, yeah, I think there were about twenty-four. We had two groups from Tennessee. Interesting, when you get there, how the different governments, I mean, they have a mayor of the county. I said, is that like county board? He goes, I don't know, we elect a mayor of the county. So we had, they were in there, everybody were a lot bigger, looking to build a lot bigger jails than what we were at, looking at anyway. Had a group from Guam there.
Guam?
Guam. So American Protectorates, so I guess they're ages that come in. A group from upstate New York, and a group from northern Indiana, or all that. But it was really, it was very informative. It kind of gives you a lot of, a lot of information on assessing whether, what your needs are, which is very important. You know, I just, I guess I really want to point out that are we interested in doing it? That's something the people, the county have to decide. It's not, it's a, if it's something that needs to be presented to the county, my concern probably more than anything is from a liability standpoint. It's not, oh, yeah, we could use a new jail, everybody could use a new house, I mean, that'd be nice, but are you going to end up paying for that with the facility we have, some, you know, the litigious society we've got, now you worry about what could happen if somebody got in the wrong situation in a jail and ended up sold down or something, so. Lot to think about, lot of research, and I think it's something that probably needs to be looked at, not something we're going to do in the next, certainly not going to do in the next, you know, not going to start next year or something, but something to look at over the long run. So. Anyway, that's kind of, that's kind of what I took away from that, so.
He was just briefly talking about the...
It's just something, even if somebody brought millions of dollars in here today, it'd still be, we're planning the whole, it's a big, big step.
It's a big step.
Then they rub it in your face and take you to a facility that makes you drill, so.
There's one place out there, we went to Broomfield, Colorado. They just built it, well, actually, not just, but thirteen years, fifteen years?
Started and what, finished in '03?
Yeah. It was nice. They've got quite a tax base. The medium income out there is eighty thousand dollars in that county, so.
What's that scale on that?
No, it's all high-tech. It's, uh, high-tech and Boeing, North of Brumman.
What was that one coming to, uh, something tech? There used to be a big nuclear base there, a nuclear facility there. It's high-end.
So, it's really interesting, but I definitely think, I think it's something that needs to be looked at, consider it very long-term, but certainly with the, with the economy, both state and federal, and as it is right now, it's not something that would even be feasible at this point, but I think it's something that you need to be prepared for if, if things ever, if the economy ever breaks out and things heat up to where there's money available to do something like that. The person that's prepared, has prepared for that is the one, is the first one in line for that kind of money, so I think that's part of the reason too, to be somewhat prepared for something like this.
Well, maybe at some point here in the real near future, when everybody gets back healthy and everything, the four of you that went to, out there, you can get together, you know, get a summary together, maybe make a presentation to the whole board, and kind of, you know, give us an idea, and see what you recommend, maybe what we need to do as a next step.
Some of them aren't healthy?
Two of them are.
Suck the flu.
Yeah.
Andy's on the edge.
Yeah.
Did you feel okay?
Yeah.
I mean, I did, but I...
I had hair problems.
I hit the ground running the minute I got back, but didn't have time to think about what the hell I felt.
So, you know, here in the near future, if you guys can get together and maybe get this, okay. Anything else, Andy?
I think that's it.
Well, let's go to the airport first. Brad and Jared have been talking about the planning and the strip areas, or you were...
Well, I briefly talked to him after I talked with you.
Okay, and they're, they're wanting to, they've been down to the ASC office, and they're looking at maybe doing some native grass planting, and is that something different than what you heard?
Well, that's something a little different than what you and I talked about.
This has just been, since I got home?
Okay.
Okay, I got a thing in the mail.
Alright.
Okay, and we need to, what I'm saying is, that's not what we're going to do, but that's what we're, they would like to discuss that, because it will increase the pollinators. Some of the other airports have done it, and it's, but we'll have to look at it and see. I'm just throwing it out there so everybody's aware of it, that's all. So, everybody's thinking, and I got a thing in the mail from Brad outlining the thing, and so I'll make that available. The other thing is, we've got a tip meeting coming up, tip meeting coming up in October. Looks like we'll probably be on the twentieth, which is a Tuesday. We'll head over there in the afternoon and have our meeting with the planning folks. That's required, so we'll be there, and we'll give everybody more details as the time gets closer. We did have a meeting with IDOT, Division of Aeronautics, here a couple of weeks ago on our projects. They are combining and adding the east apron to the west apron, along with the tank farm. Okay, so it's going to be actually a three-pronged attack. Because of bonding and because of putting it together, we're talking about not starting construction in the fall, mainly because of bonding issues. They've already gotten like four or five projects that they bid, they've accepted, but they haven't started because nobody's got the shares to do it. So they figured we might as well wait. We're talking about a late January letting and starting in March, actual construction. The construction will take approximately two months, and so we'll be in plenty of time for the crop dusters and everything else out there.
Is it going to be concrete or asphalt?
That is yet to be determined, okay?
I just want to keep her...
Well, and I, the issue is with asphalt.
Yeah.
The, the small amount of asphalt, and because of its non-reardily availability here, makes it extremely expensive. And they've got to do that versus maintenance. Obviously, concrete is, is less maintenance, so they're going to see how that's going to work out. Additionally, by combining the projects into one bid, IDOT now will, or Division of Aeronautics, will do the bidding rather than us and our engineers on the tank farm. Therefore, they're working it out, and we may not be hit with that additional five percent, but we're still, they're still working that out. So, our costs may drop over there. But you've got to remember, our costs may increase a little bit because of what we're, you know, it's been a couple of years, so costs have gone up, so they're going to give us a good cost estimate here rather rapidly, okay? Now, as far as the budget, I can cast that out to you guys. We are getting in some of our, we've got in sales tax, supplemental sales tax, state income tax, and local use tax, and some personal property tax. So, we are still receiving some funds. I think it would behoove us to consider, you know, when I came in this morning and having not had this and been gone a week, and we've got these funds in, we may consider carefully looking at some of our expenditures from the year, from this point till the end of the year, making sure, at least consider the idea of making sure that they're essential purchases, and advising our different departments, both elected and appointed department heads, that they might look at carefully approaching any purchase, given the cash flow needs of the county, and, and just to protect our financial stability, okay? So we'll just have to, it's not something we have to do immediately, but that's something that Don and I are looking at, and we'll go from there. Augie, is there anything else that I'm overlooking? You were even listening to me, were you...
Yeah, something about your Florida trip is what I, no.
Budget.
Budget, preparation.
We have most of the budgets in. Mine isn't in all of it, but it will be in the next day or two. Don has received many of the budgets. By the end of the week, I think we should be able to put things together. I don't know whether we'll have a rough draft for everybody to look at by the meeting, but we're going to try, and it may be rough, rough. And I think what we're going to do is approach any budget meetings as a special meeting, and so that everybody can be there. Normally, we have five or six guys or board members there, and that way we can do it as a committee of the whole, and, and that way, I think it'll work better, okay? So, we'll get it out to everybody so they can say, they can take a look at it, and start to get some idea where we're at, okay? We did get in the twenty-five thousand dollars from the 911 folks before the end of the month, so the September payment has already been made, just in case you'd like to know. We're at seventy-five percent of the year, and we're at sixty, or seventy-one percent of the, of expenditures, so we've got about four percent in there, okay? But you also got to remember, we've got, like, Manitron, we paid out fifty-eight thousand, which won't be repeated. We paid out thirty-seven thousand to the education agency. I mean, there's big expenditures that won't be repeated, so that helps us too. So, right now, we're looking at a surplus at the end of the year to pay down debt. We just don't know where we're at yet, but we'll, we'll hone in on that little while, okay?
Question. Board member Silo was asking about possibility of increasing sales tax, like a quarter of one percent, or half of one percent, for the Metcalf money. I don't know how that works. I told him I'd bring it up at the board meeting.
Who was?
It was, it was one of the school board members, Silo.
Still, still.
For money that could be used for, why, I don't know. He just asked him, and I said, well, I'll bring it up. I don't know how it works. Maybe you can answer that question.
Well, it'd have to be, and I've heard other agencies have talked about it too. I know the, the city of Metcalf has mentioned it. I, I forget, somebody in Parasite, one of the school districts had mentioned it. So there are several different agencies that are looking at that, but it boils down to a referendum at some point.
I can't figure it out. It seems like it can be done without a referendum. I don't know.
I'm not aware of that.
I'm not either, so.
I'm not aware, and I've got that tax book, and it's, you can, you can definitely, and you can say it's for education, and then by area, you could go to the school districts, you could make it a safety tax, you can do a number of different things. You can even split it up. You could say a quarter for this, a quarter, you know, there's all kinds of different ways that you can do it.
I didn't know much about it, so.
Okay.
Doesn't the city of Paris already have an additional, there are taxes more than what mine is in the country, as far as what I collect?
Yes, I think there's what, uh, three quarters?
Seven, like three quarters of the same.
Three quarters of the same is, is on in Parasite, but I can't tell you what it's for.
Was that done by referendum also?
Well, I don't know, because I don't know when that was done, and what the circumstances were, do.
He said something about you could do it without a referendum, I don't know that, so. I think you'd want to do it with a referendum.
Well, I know Home Rules can do it without referendum, but I, we'll look at that.
Okay, I was telling you to check on that.
Yeah, we'll check, see what's going on.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Any other questions on finance and so forth? Airport, we got a meeting the week after our meeting. I think it's the twelfth, the fourteenth, so it'll be after our meeting, okay?
And this is the only meeting prior to our full board meeting, correct?
Yes.
So you'll have to figure out how to get all of our packets and all that to us?
You can electronically send mine.
Mine too.
Yeah, me too.
Except for one board member.
Are we going to discuss how we're going to approach the new board member?
Yeah, I didn't realize we weren't going to have a meeting next Monday. I talked to him this morning, visited with him a little bit. As of this morning, I haven't been contacted by the Republican Party. Augie hasn't been notified by the Republican Party. I know you received a phone call, I read it in the paper.
Yeah.
But we haven't been notified who they're recommending.
I thought you said you had, and I guess that you were, just by me, you were notified.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that doesn't count.
No.
I don't count for anything.
No, no.
Well, you know what?
No.
They should, they should contact us.
Maybe we should have Augie call?
Yeah, since they obviously...
We need some kind of...
I'm always supposed to be here today.
I guess I kind of thought somebody'd be here too. He said he was going to be.
Yeah, I, I thought he was going to be here, but he's got a ten o'clock meeting.
Appointment, so he said he couldn't make it. But, but I talked to him about maybe having a luncheon, but, you know, anyway, we need to get something from Mr. Peterson.
So you'd like for me to initiate that contact with him and get something formal?
Yeah.
Semi-formal?
We should have something that says that we officially...
That's what we've been waiting on.
Submit this thing.
Right, yeah, I've been waiting for something, and nothing's ever came yet.
Fair.
So, but yeah, and I told him that I would anticipate at our next meeting, which is next Wednesday, not this Wednesday, next Wednesday, that, that would, that would be put on the agenda.
Yeah, Augie had suggested maybe, you know, we call the order and we do our things, and then we have him, like, the judge swear him in, and then see him, and...
So that's...
Select your chairman and go on with the rest of the meeting.
Right, right. So that, that's how I feel, like, does everybody agree?
I agree, yeah.
I think the main thing is, I think, well, you know him.
Oh, you do?
He's a good guy.
First I ever met him.
Right, so, I mean, it's, I mean, everybody's got to have a...
Right.
Yeah.
Those may sound pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, he's not a...
He's a military guy, from there.
A Marine, a Marine.
He's a...
He's a file.
A little bit younger than some of us.
Yeah, yeah, but, yeah, I was, I didn't realize he was thirty-seven. I thought he was thirty-four, thirty...
Oh, he is.
Thirty-seven, I think.
Thirty-seven, yes. He may have some good ideas.
Just a kid.
Yeah, just a kid.
He's got a little...
Well, that meets my age. It's his family.
Yeah, he's old enough to be your grandson.
Yeah, double that, you're right to be. Yeah, I'm young for an age of...
I would anticipate that our next meeting, that we would get that all, get the details worked out, and get that taken care of and so on.
Yeah, that sounds like kind of a fun, busy meeting.
Tomorrow, we have a negotiating meeting at eleven, eleven o'clock tomorrow, if I'm correctly going.
There are time limits on that, like, doesn't end at midnight, something like this.
I'm not going to come in on what I think.
I've been on some of those, yeah.
I don't think it's going to last long.
No, neither. Not. Do we have a deputy sheriff there for protection?
I'll wear my T-shirt tomorrow.
Okay.
One thing I wanted to bring up, and I know I've discussed it with two or three of the board members. Last, Andy, oh, you were there when we had the conversation, last meeting, after the last meeting, you know, we had some discussion with some folks from the public, and it was brought up about they would like to see a question, a period during the meeting where they could ask questions. I know we've got the public comment, and sometimes, you know, normally the, during, in the past, they've had the public comments, portion of it, and they ask questions, and sometimes we respond, sometimes we don't, sometimes we can't, you know, just different things, but I just want to throw this out for discussion that maybe we could include in our meeting, a question period, you know, maybe at the tail end. When we're talking, we, you know, can't go on forever and ever and ever, you know, limit it to five or ten minute period, and like I say, if we can't get an answer to their question, we can, you know, take the information, the question down and get back to them. And, you know, they, it was mentioned, maybe post it on our website, I'm not sure. I just want to throw that out, have some discussion. I know a couple of board members aren't here, and I think I've talked with them, and both of them, I didn't feel like maybe that's something we should do.
I think it's a good idea, really.
So, I just want to throw that out for us to discuss and think about, and maybe add that to our agenda for the future.
At the end of the meeting, I'd like to...
Yeah.
See, at the airport, we have a public comment, and then there's a, I forget what it's called, a redress at the end, in case we cover stuff that people have questions of.
They have a right to ask questions. They don't answer all of them, but same token, they have a right to ask.
Well, what we can do also is that, I, I'm not volunteering her, but Terry could write down the questions, and then, not that she's responsible for answering, but that we'd have a, we'd have them, one, two, three, and then we could get them farmed off to where they need to be answered.
Maybe we have the questions at the workshop before the meeting the next month, and we could kind of discuss them here, and think what type of answers we want to give the...
I mean, some of the questions might be easy to answer right then, right, but some of them, you know, you have to do some research, or, and some of them, because of pending legislate, or pending notification, you know, you can't answer them.
Well, that's what we say.
And we can tell them, yeah, I'm sorry, but we can't answer those because of...
I, I just want us to have that discussion and see if we can implement that in the future.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Yeah, I do too.
So we, when we get together, again, all of us, we can do...
What about the one on FOIA's? You know, that was suggested. That's more problematic.
Right.
But...
FOIA being...
Well, in other words, somebody asks FOIA's somebody for a question, and saying, well, where, where's this? Then you go ahead and put it on the website, your answer for anybody to look at the answer.
No, okay.
And I'm not sure that's practical.
Right, that's what I was...
But I did want to at least discuss it.
Right, it was brought up, yes, that was a question.
Maybe we should walk before we run.
Yeah, I agree. FOIA's a little sticky sometimes, do you know that?
Well, and we don't want to, you know, you don't want to open a gate that you can't close.
Right.
And then all we're doing is, an array.
Right.
Right.
And, you know, that's going to involve work for some people, you know, doing all this too, you know, especially putting on the website. I mean, the questions, I don't have a problem with that. The FOIA, you guys do that anyway, but, you know, someone has to type stuff in or scan stuff, you know, it just, it just causes a lot more work for everybody.
Well, the only thing you could do with the FOIA would be, for better term, carbon copy, the, the, the answer to the, to the website. I mean, I mean, that could be set up, but still, I mean, that's...
You know what happens with FOIA, fifteen things, you put those all on the website, I mean, that's getting...
I mean, they're like...
August, bit, August off.
I know when 911 got FOIA'd for stuff, there was thousands and thousands of paper, pieces of paper.
Same way with the...
Same way with you on some of your stuff, it's just...
And we're not all electron, I mean, not everything has been documented in the computer.
Right.
You know, if they wanted something from last week, that's different than if they wanted from four years ago.
Right.
So. Anyway, I, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
We ought to be at least receptive, and I mean, what you said earlier, I agree with.
I do too.
We need to get along. We need to try to, part of our problems are, that are initially, we kind of stiff-armed everything, and, years ago, and right or wrong, that's past, but we...
Well, you're always afraid, you may say something that, off the top, that you really should have thought about a little bit more, so it's easier, but you also need to make the people feel like they're involved, well, as they are.
Well, the difference between how much is in a certain fund, where you could look at, opposed to, how are you guys going to deal with this in the future?
Right.
You know, there's a big difference.
And another thing we talked about is availability at these meetings, you know, it's, for the last few years, you know, at times it's got heated, and there's...
No place for it.
No place for that whatsoever, and...
But how you control it all.
Well, you turn the other cheek for our part, you know, where, you know, we're elected officials, certain people are going to say certain things, and there's nothing you can do about it.
People have a difficult time returning the other cheek. Not me, but...
But, you know, maybe, you know, if the faculty were answering their questions, maybe they'll feel more involved, and maybe it won't be your confrontation, you know, just have a civil conversation.
Atmosphere, if we can.
That's all I have.
I think it's a good idea, really.
Yeah. Does anybody else have anything?
I did want to bring something up, because Kevin McReynolds from Coles County got back with me, and this is new to me. If, this is about the jail grant, and I've been working with him on this thing, and I thought I was close, then he comes back last week and says, the Eager, if Eager County, I think he just found out some, some parameters on this. Baker County applies for a jail grant from the USDA. USDA will cover fifty-five percent of the cost, but the county would be responsible for the remaining forty-five percent. The grant ceiling is twenty-five thousand for community facilities grants, so a forty-five thousand project would allow for the maximum twenty-five thousand USDA participation.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
What it means is, we've got to basically have at least a forty-five thousand dollar project.
Okay.
In order to get the twenty-five thousand dollars.
In the jail, you're not talking about a new jail now?
No, no, no.
Okay, I'm going.
This is that grant, this is that grant, and none of this had ever been mentioned, you know, he just said, hey, there's twenty-five thousand. I'm in with the guy that, we got that morning.
We got to pay twenty thousand.
She basically told us, they give us twenty-five thousand.
Whatever you need, if you need it for this.
Well, we have to have fifty-five in order to make it work.
You, we need a...
Forty-five, I'm sorry.
It's a forty-five thousand, they'll give us twenty-five, so we have to have... It's a forty-five thousand, they'll give us twenty-five, so we have to chuck in twenty thousand. So he said, you know.
That's still.
It's good, no, it's a good.
I think we have a.
I don't know whether you need to look at something. I have a lot of trouble, people get back with me, like contractors, and I, and I know why, because they're all covered up. They don't need the work. So when they, when you're sitting there saying, okay, you wanna do this work on this, it's like, no, not really.
And then deal with all the baggage.
Two years right now, why do I wanna come give you a contract and possibly lose money on the deal or not make as much as I can working by the hour out here? So none of them, they don't get back with me. Yeah, it's really difficult. There aren't enough, we need more people in town. But anyway, that being said, need to come up with a project. That, that, whether it's a lump sum thing or something, you know, I don't know whether it's equipment and you need to spend the other money that you have maybe earmarked for that on some, I don't know. But that's the parameters of this project.
So in the budget, do you want me to put in, receive twenty-five and pass through forty-five, or have a project for forty-five?
For forty-five thousand?
Or fifty and thirty?
Fifty, forty-five plus, basically, and they'll give us twenty-five. And they're, I understand they're relatively easy to do, but we've gotta give them a project figure for this and they'll.
We could.
They'll fill the grant out accordingly.
Okay, I know originally we were talking about using that money for repairs to the jail, but it's not limited to that. It could be for.
You could do, you can use it for anything.
So we could, we could do the airport doors, I mean, if we had to.
Jeff's sitting there going, I wanted this for the jail.
I'm just, I'm not, I'm not talking, we've got problems.
We've got everywhere.
Or you could use it for squad cars instead of.
That's exactly right. You could say, this is really, here, we're checking in twenty thousand for squad cars.
And then that twenty thousand you use.
Twenty-five thousand they'll, they'll give you for.
Repairs to the jail.
Then you could take money that you were gonna use for squad guard and reclassify it for, you know.
For.
We're gonna have to identify that fairly quickly so we can put it in the budget that's appropriate. Everybody, your committee and Jeff need to get together and figure out how you wanna do that.
That's the first time they've, I mean, I've, I've been following and talking back and forth with this guy for a long time. I thought, he said, I think I've got all the information, then he did. I think he met with him and this is information that they just gave him lately.
So that's still not a killer. I mean, we've, we've allotted forty grand anyway.
Well, it is, I mean, I kinda understood when we started out, we got twenty-five thousand to do what, what we wanted. And then we come back the second time and we kinda had to designate where we were going to.
Cause you had people come in and give you prices for doing some repairs.
That's where we had that estimates and stuff and now they're saying, yeah, we still give it to you, but you've gotta match it with some less money for a bigger project.
Like the seventy-forty, I think, is what it announced to.
Well, that's still a better deal than what we were looking at.
Right. It's not like a problem spent, it's something somewhere, so.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.